Welcome everyone to the Town of Napanee regular session of council for the 22nd day of April 2025. Just before we get started, I just want to remind everyone this evening that this evening's meeting will be live streamed onto our YouTube channel. So welcome to the folks that are at home this evening. Welcome to the folks that are here this evening. And welcome to those that will be able to watch the YouTube from now to eternity, at least at this point anyway. So welcome. And we're going to get started. We'll start with our opening proceedings, which is the National Anthem of Canada. We'll ask the folks that are here inside the council chambers to stand as we play the National Anthem. Thanks, folks. We're going to start this evening's meeting with respect to our closed session. I'll look for motion to rise and report from our closed session meeting that we had earlier this afternoon or this evening. Moved by Councilor Martin, seconded by Counselor Hic or Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, the motion's carried. I'd like to report that this evening in closed session, council approved the closed session minutes of April 8th, reviewed nominations for Senior of the Year Award and gave direction to staff and received information regarding an enforcement matter and gave direction to staff. Having said that, we'll look for motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion's carried. Is there any disclosure, pecuniary interest, and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. First up on this evening's meeting, we have scheduled deputations, and I believe we have a couple of deputations this evening. First up is the Municipal Heritage Committee archival document presentation. And I believe somebody will be speaking to that. Come on forward, ma'am, and we'll just get you to, I know you've probably been here before. I'm going to get you to, once you get settled. We'll give you the direction here with respect to these microphones. You'll see on the microphone in front of you that there's a button that says talk. You have to push and hold that button to talk. The mic will be live, and then when you release the button, the mic will not be live, obviously. We'd need you to hold that button and talk because the folks at home won't be able to hear what you have to say, and I know they're going to be interested in hearing that. So just for the records, would just get both of you to identify yourself, just provide your name for the, for Madam Clerk.
I'm Heidi Lind, and I'm a member of the Heritage Committee.
I'm Cameron Edie, and I brought some documents.
Great, thanks, folks. Who wants to start?
I'm going to be speaking tonight. I'm here, and I want to thank you, Mr. Richardson, Mayor Richardson, and members of council for letting us make this presentation. I'm here to speak on what I call artifact storage. And I guess I'll start by saying that in January of this year, all of the committees of council were given revised mandates. The Heritage Committee's mandate listed five priorities from council. And number three, which I have shortened here, reads to the effect of provide recommendations and advice on ways to incorporate known artifacts and images of historical significance in its heavily used facilities to expose residents to our history. So in February, our committee reviewed this revised mandate for the first time, and priority number three prompted some discussion around what these artifacts might be. At the same meeting, we were alerted to a challenge and an opportunity with respect to some important historical artifacts. You're probably familiar with Mr. Cameron Edie, who is a dedicated local historian who contributes to our community in numerous ways, but not the least of which is through the Facebook site, Our Napanee Do You Remember? Since 2019, Cameron has been sharing images and text from historical copies of the Napanee Beaver and the Napanee Express. This collection of newspapers dates from 1875 to 1999, and it had become a property of Adam Prudhomme when he purchased the Napanee Beaver. Adam generously passed the newspapers on to Mr. Edie, who took on the task of moving them from the Beaver Building so that he could organize, store, and continue to share this amazing historical resource. But storing them became a challenge, one that Mr. Edie and his dedicated friends have spent many hours addressing. So we're here tonight on behalf of the Heritage Committee to present the opportunity for you as council for the town to take possession of these artifacts. We also know that in the basement of this building, there's a large collection of historical photographs and other items which are unorganized and unavailable to be displayed or appreciated by the community. So our request is simple. First of all, we're not suggesting that the town starts amassing a collection of artifacts. We know the museum does a good job of that. However, they are running out of space, and they put a decommissioning policy in place in 2019. I have been in one storage room at the museum, which contains dozens of spectacular paintings, many of iconic Napanee locations or by local artists like the late Ruth Brooks. Now, Mr. Edie tells me that Ruth Brooks paintings are brought out, but it's very unlikely that the paintings that I have seen, all of the others, will make it to public display in my lifetime because lack of space and changing priorities at the archives are just creating a different priority. You also know, I'm sure, that the Lenox and Addington Historical Society disbanded in 2023 after 116 years of dedicated work, and all of their papers and artifacts were turned over to the museum. But the archives has limited manpower to process all the material that comes in, and although many copies of historic papers have been digitized, viewing them is not always a simple process, nor is it anything like seeing the original papers. With respect to the space required to store the newspapers in Mr. Edie's possession, they would fit on the steel shelves that are located in the northwest corner on the ground floor. There's a room in that corner with some steel shelves. We're not suggesting that papers be stored there now because we know this building is soon going to undergo a significant reconfiguration. What we're proposing tonight is that town staff be asked to consider and report back to you on what town-owned buildings might have a room capable of storing both the newspapers and the items that are currently in the basement. The Heritage Committee would commit to assist with the moving and organization of all of these so that any staff time requirements were kept to a minimum. We have the utmost respect for the ability of town staff to find creative options and solutions. What we're not asking for is anything that would require new expenditures like climate control measures or anything like that. Right now, these newspapers are stored in a designated citizen's garage. That's Mr. Bill Wallraven. Perhaps one day, they could be housed in the basement of this building along with those items that are already there following the renovation. Perhaps there's a room in another building owned by the town. Maybe someday they could go into the old railway station if Morningstar Mission decided not to extend their lease, or perhaps they could find a home at 12 Market Square if that building didn't sell. Mr. Edie has said he would be happy to occasionally assist citizens to view the newspapers if they were housed in a location where that was possible. He hopes to be able to continue to share the stories and irreplaceable images they contain, and he is currently digitizing as many images as he can. So there are many possibilities for this and future councils and citizen groups to share these newspapers, but not if they're gone. And this year, Napanee celebrates its 170th year as an incorporated town. For 158 of those years, the Napanee Express and the Napanee Beaver reported the news and captured local stories as the town and the region grew. They reflect a history you won't find in any book or online. They really are our history books. The Heritage Committee believes that this is a rare opportunity for the town to possess and preserve a unique asset for future generations. We also believe that bringing this information for your consideration reflects the mandate that you set for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Mr. Edie, did you wish to say a few words, or are you good with what Heidi has said?
Yeah, they aren't all like this. This is one year, 1937, by the way, bound. Some of them are, yeah. Some are loose, some are in rougher shape. They're very delicate, so.
There is a proper way.
Yeah, yeah, that's easy. So if, again, if you had a location, I can already give Robin Lee papers. He asked for years. I'm already kind of parsing them out to people. But they're in Bill's garage, you know, I have to contact Bill and go to the garage, you know. Anyway, so, yeah, and I'm digit. The Beaver gave me some negatives. They're right here. These are the years of the negatives, by the way. I'll just give you a few years, 1974, 1987, and I'm slowly digitizing those at the highest resolution as I can. So those, and then I'm giving the negatives to the museum when I'm done because they want them. But those could be on a computer where you could look up a year, 1987, and just flick through every month. I'm storing them month-wise, so I'll take January of 1987. So that's, and they're really, really good. I mean, some of these are taken with Hasselblad cameras, which are the finest camera you can buy, portrait camera. Like, they're just stunning. I don't know if you go on our Napanee, some of those pictures from 1975 are just, they're just unbelievable. People are just going, wow, I've never seen my dad look like that, you know, last time. And anyway, we also have a few Napanee Express, which is even better paper. These are the years. Those reporters were just unbelievable in the Napanee Express. So I am digitizing them, but I'm only doing selected articles for our Napanee. So I just choose, I'm doing it by the month. I just choose maybe 50 articles out of that. So when I'm putting on a nap, it's just the tip of the iceberg. What's in the paper? It's just whatever catches my eye and I find interesting. What else to say? That's about it. Yeah. So, yeah, they're in Bill's garage. It's their second move now, and Bill wants his garage back at some point, so. The National Archive has said they will take them if I bring them up there. So that.
When they're gone, they're gone.
Yeah, so that's, they're gone. Because once they go behind the archive door, even at the museum, it's hard to, hard to get stuff out there, hard to touch it. You can touch these things. The museum has most of the papers. They have more than I do. They're missing certain issues. I'm taking them up slowly, like those, I have a list at home. I should have brought it, say, like 1937. They're missing, missing issue like seven and eight or something. So I'm slowly bringing them up, and they're filling their, they're missing chunks of the papers, but they have more than I do. So the museum doesn't want them. I've talked to everybody, Terry Archive, the museum, Queens, the library, the high school, do you want enough space? And the only person that wants them is the National Archives. So, and then they're gone. Yeah, and I'm willing to help people. If they, if you have a room, they can come. I can show them how to open them up. I can move them for them so they don't get damaged. They are frail. Anyway, that's all.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Cameron. Just hang tight. We'll see if council has any questions of your presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
It's more of a comment than a question. It's part of our history, and you know how I love my history. But so if staff could go ahead, come up with a staff recommendation of what we can do and where we can save them in one of the municipality, one of the, one of the buildings, that's up to the staff to go ahead and find out. But I sure do not want to lose a part of our history because as the next generation's going, and as your dad, your father, Mr. Edie, would teach me in history when I went to high school, I'd want him to come back and haunt me. So, so, so I think we should definitely look at this and as a municipality, keep a hold of our thing and alleviate gentleman's grudge, too.
Thanks, thanks, Counselor Shank. Counselor Martin, I'll go to Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you, Mayor. Heidi and Cameron, thank you tonight for coming and doing. You guys know I support you. I'm on the Heritage Committee as well with Heidi, but not only the newspapers, but there's some other items that we want to store. And I think there's possibly going to be some ongoing things that people may want to donate to the town and things that we should be preserving for the future. So, but Cameron's newspaper collection that he, that he is now trying to preserve, I think is very important. And tonight, rather than just note and receive, I would prefer to put a motion that we do direct staff to look into seeing what we can come up to as far as space for storing archaeological, you know, things for the town. We need to preserve the history of the town. So like I say, rather than just note and receive, I would like to put a motion forward that we direct staff to do that accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. I think that was probably the direction that we're going to go in. So I appreciate that. Is there anything else, Counselor? I was going to go Deputy Mayor Calver, now Counselor here.
Thank you, Your Worship. Cameron, Heidi, you mentioned, I know the shelves that you're talking about very well because I've gone rifling through them on occasion. So that set of shelves, you're telling me that set of shelves would accommodate all of these, basically because they are flat and they're all fairly uniform in size?
It's just the strength, in a sense, and the depth, and so those shelves really represent what, what's required. Yeah.
Just to add, we built some shelves. They were in the Standard Church on Palace Road, and me and Bill got wood and actually built some shelves. That was probably not enough, so we have some two-by-four shelving we've built that could go along with it. Probably not enough, but we start, we were starting that.
May I just say, too, we also have the historical photographs that we, as a Heritage Committee, have had mounted that appeared in the downtown business windows, and we are having more of those made. That's another example of the kind of thing that we need storage for.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, through your worship. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you've done. I, I love, I love your articles on Facebook. I watch them. I follow them a lot. Sometimes I don't comment, but I do, I really look forward to seeing them on Facebook. I want to thank you for that. You've put a lot of time and effort into it, and it hasn't, hasn't went unnoticed. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there anything else? Counselor Hicks.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on what Deputy Mayor Calver said. So when you look over and it's 12:38 a.m., and you have to get up in the morning, but you're only on picture 56 out of 87, and you're just dying to know if you know anybody in those pictures. So, yeah, much appreciated, and we, we all hear it. Everybody talks about it. So, yeah, it's a great service.
And I'm having lots of fun doing it. So that's, that's what the great thing is.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. If there's nothing else, I'd just like to thank you folks for coming here tonight. Obviously, you know, our process with respect to deputations is, is to listen, and if there's some actionable stuff, then we're going to direct staff to, to follow up and just see what we have the ability to do, what we don't have the ability to do. Obviously, this municipality is rich in history, and there's lots of it. We've been around a long time, so we should exploit it as much as we can. That being said, you know, I guess there's only so much space, but we're going to try and do what, what we can do. And you're absolutely right, Heidi, is that I think this year, you're going to see a transformation to this building that is going to awe and amaze a lot of people. So we've just got to try and figure out how we're going to utilize that. So, but once again, thank you for coming. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And, and one of the most important things we do in this municipality is to, to rejoice, I guess, is the best way, the history, because it's something that just can't be replaced. So thank you. Having said that, we'll look for a motion for council to note and receive the deputation of the Municipal Heritage Committee regarding archival document preservation and further that council directs staff to provide a report back on the presentation request. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, the motion's carried. Thanks, folks. Next up, we have Susan Withers, Fire Department Support for Community Gardens. On up, Susan. I know you've probably not been here since we've changed the microphones. So again, you've had the opportunity to see what everybody else is doing. You'll see the button on the right that says talk. You have to push that button and hold it to talk. And, because I'm sure that everybody at home wants to hear, and like I say, that's the only way they're going to be able. We can hear you in here if you don't do that, but the folks at home can't. So welcome, and whenever you're ready, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mayor Richardson and council for hearing our deposition. We, the volunteers of the community, Napanee Community Garden, request that the Napanee Fire Department continue to supply water to the tanks at the Napanee Community Garden, which grows fresh, locally grown food for the Salvation Army Food Bank. The garden is located on County Road 8, 2 kilometers south of Napanee on Gorge Sherman Orange Poverty. We have been in operation since 2010. I have provided a copy of our ongoing stats for the produce grown and delivered to the Salvation Army here in Napanee. The local fire department has graciously been keeping our tanks filled and to enable us to continue this valuable work to feed those less fortunate in our community. Our labor force is fully made up of volunteer labor. We do not have a financial budget for the work we do. We depend on our volunteers. Without the continued help of the fire department, we would not be able to continue providing this food for the food bank. Thank you all for considering this request.
Thanks, Susan. Just hang tight, and we'll see if anybody has any questions for you. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you, through your worship. Susan, how much water do you go through an average week or month, or how often are the tanks filled up?
Of course, it's going to depend on the weather. I mean, last summer, being a very wet summer, we didn't require a whole lot, but I would have to say on the average of, we have five tanks, they're 1,000-liter tanks. About every two weeks, we would require a fill-up during a droughty season.
Thank you. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other questions or comments of Susan? Before we, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
This is a comment, being a farmer, but I'd go past there every time I drive on my way home, but to see a whole bunch of seniors that are going ahead and you're providing a function, there's a lot of physical, I would take great pride in over the years of me driving by there for the last 15 years. You're in your 16th growing year, and when you look at your, wow, I wish I kept data that well, it shows exactly. wow, I wish I kept data that well. It shows exactly what they produced, what the lettuce, six and a half, you know what I mean? It, it, it's a joy to see what they've done and how they've done it. All right. And so, yeah, I still, I feel that, of course, we should continue doing what we're doing. It provides a service. It's not that you're making any money on it. We have a policy with, that is for not-for-profit. But at the same token is, is that when you're doing what you're doing for the community and giving back to the community and at the same time feeding the community and you know, probably teaching some of the grandkids if they come up to help or whatever, I think it's only a good cause.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Schenk. Is there any other questions or comments for Susan? Seeing none, just a quick question, Susan. You've mentioned that the fire department is doing this for, been doing this for a number of years. I mean, obviously I don't think it has to be the fire department. If, if we're able to provide some type of service to get you water, then, I mean, obviously it doesn't have to be the fire department. Am I correct that? I'm just thinking what type of equipment we would use to, to get the water there other than a, a full-sized fire truck.
I, I can't answer that. It's just, that's been the water truck that's always come over and done it. We have a path and Gord has specific instructions as to where to park and this sort of thing.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to answer your question, I mean, um, staff can certainly take a look at what equipment that we have, um, that carries water and whatnot. I'm not sure that, um, carrying water has to be done by a fire truck. We can, if it's council's will, we can certainly determine what, um, vehicles and equipment we have or would require to continue to provide the service.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything from council that come out of our conversation? Go ahead, Counsel Schenk. Then I'll go to Counsel Hicks.
So, uh, I think the residents, all they care is that we get water. How we get water to them, they don't care as long as those tanks are filled during a dry period of time. With Sean and staff, if they want to go ahead and review to find out what's the most in policy or which, whatever, as long as we can guarantee that we're going to get water to the, their vegetable gardens, especially with the new raised beds that you got too. So, uh, I feel that if staff wants to look into that, fine. As long as you get water to them, I'm happy because it's too far for me to drive the tractor. All right. You know, so there you go.
Yeah, thanks, Counsel Hicks. Go ahead, uh, or sorry, Counsel Schenk. Go ahead, Counsel Hicks.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, yeah, I'll just reiterate what Counsel Schenk said. I don't think it matters how the water gets there as long as you've got water and you can, you can grow the food. So, and I'm, I'm personally quite supportive of continuing this, whether it's with the public works truck or the fire truck, whatever staff deems is the most sensible vehicle to use. I'm, uh, I'm fine. I'm good with that.
Great, thanks. Uh, thanks, Counsel Hicks. Is there anything else? Uh, Counsel Norrie.
I have to agree and hopefully we get the decision fast enough so they can get organized and don't have any worries because they've done nothing but goodness in this town.
Yeah, I think there's still some time before the growing season starts and with the wet spring that we've had, I'm, I'm guessing, Susan, that we probably have a little bit of time.
If you come to my house, you'll see it started.
Is that right, eh? Yeah, they're still getting snow in some parts of the province. So, um, is there anything else? Go ahead, Counsel Schenk.
This is not a conflict of interest. But when you were discussing about Citizen of the Year or Senior of the Year or whatever it is, Sue worked at the hospital for numerous years. And she developed, uh, she helped deliver my eldest child, all right, Kyle. So you've done, you've been looking after little ones for, and now you're growing more things. So, and I, and looking after Ken too at the same time. But, but all I'm saying, I'd just like to thank you personally too, for what you've done and with your seniors.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, Counsel Schenk. Is there anything else before we look for a motion? Seeing none, uh, we'll look for a motion that council will note and receive the deputation from Susan Withers regarding the fire truck support for the community gardens and for the council directs staff to provide a report back on the presentation request. And I think that staff has been listening intentively and I think they have the, the will of council on their mind. So, uh, do we have a mover in a second? Uh, moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counsel Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, the motion's carried. Thanks, folks. And, uh, I'm sure that we should have an answer for it by the time we come back to council, our next regular session of council. Next up on our agenda, we have deputations with respect to items on the agenda, and I don't believe we have any of those. After that, we have correspondence items on the agenda, and I don't believe we have any of those unfinished business. Madam Clerk, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Moving right into our administrative consent agenda, and it's fairly lengthy one, so bear with us as we go through the consent agenda. First up, council minutes, regular session of council, eighth of April, twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in those minutes that anyone would like to, uh, bring attention to or speak to? Seeing none, committee minutes, Market Square Advisory Committee. Is there anything in those minutes that anyone would like to bring note of or speak to? And, uh, Counselor Pennell, I believe that's your committee. So, uh, did you want to bring any highlights, anything?
Uh, thank you, Worship. Through you, uh, no, nothing really, anything more, but we've heard a couple of times tonight about, you know, things, things that are going to happen to this building this year and, uh, everybody on the committee is, is quite excited to get this thing going. And I know that there's going to be some tenders going out soon if they haven't already gone out. So we're, we're looking forward to, to this year, that's for sure.
Great, thanks, Counsel Pennell. Is there anything else? Seeing none, correspondence for information items dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in those correspondence, Counsel Pennell? I know that you want to speak to one matter there.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I, I'd like to, uh, separate and remove item number seventeen from, um, sorry, from Rideau and Rideau Lake, sorry, and discuss that later on tonight after nine point six. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Counsel Pennell. Actually, I think it might be nine point seven after that. But, uh, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll remove that one, uh, so we can have a conversation about that. Is there anything anyone else would like to speak to? Seeing none, uh, proclamations, emergency aware, emergency preparedness week, fibromyalgia awareness day, V O N week and Pride Month. Uh, there's some dates for all of those, uh, proclamations. Is there anything anyone would like to speak to with respect to any of those proclamations? Seeing none, uh, council inquiry, follow-up, medium water fill station. Uh, is there anything, anyone has any questions with respect to that report? And, um, I'm not sure what staff member dealt with that. I'd have to look at it. Michael, did, uh, did you want to speak to it or is Counsel Norrie, I know that you had made that inquiry. Did you want to ask any more questions other than what's in the report?
More of a comment. Uh, I just can't believe in six years we can't see how much water costs to come out of there. But every one of my utility bills or any utility bills goes up if you use more. I just hope that if we're not charging enough, that it's not coming off the utility bills to pay the difference. Because that's a lot of complaints I get. I notes apples and oranges, utility bills cover in and out water, infrastructure, a new water treatment plant, trucks and so on. So do we, uh, but no one can tell me, is it two fifty that they fill up under those tanks enough or not? And I'm surprised in six years, I mean, you fill up with gas, you know, it costs a liter and it's very frustrating for a lot of people. I saw that. And, uh, I just can't get a definite answer and I'm not going to give up.
Thanks, Counsel Norrie. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Nobes. I think you want to comment on that. So.
Yeah, through your worship. Um, so what we've done is, um, we looked at the overall costs of taking water from Lake Ontario and bringing it into the water treatment plant itself. Cost of the treatment to be discharged out of the medium fill station, that comes to around sixty-three cents per cubic meter. Um, so less than the cost that's being, uh, charged at the fill station today. Now that does not take into consideration overall budget impacts for conveyance of store, of, of water, you know, to the outer reaches of the, of the serviced area. But the cost to take the water from, uh, Lake Ontario, bring it into the treatment facility, treat it and, and push it out of that, uh, fill station is sixty-three cents per cubic meter. So there, we're charging, I believe it's two, two, two fifty, uh, two dollars per cubic meter. So, or, yeah, there, there is no, um, offset being applied to a utility bill for, for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, I've been waiting for that answer for six years and, uh, if you're satisfied that, uh, there, those coins are covering it, then I'm happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Norrie. Thank you, uh, Mr. Nobes. Is there anything else? Counsel Hicks.
Through you, uh, your worship. So, and I think we need to give the public, uh, fair warning and heads up when the time comes to move the medium fill station, that the, the cost will increase. I mean, because it's only traveling maybe fifteen meters from where it's treated and then coming out the spout, so to speak. So there will be an additional cost once the, the fill station is moved. So, and at that point, you'll, you'll see, it'll be more reflective, like the outer reaches of the serviced area, correct? Yes.
Through your worship, yeah, yes, that, that is correct. Um, don't have a good, uh, ballpark rate that I could give you tonight, but it would certainly be more than two dollars. Um, so yeah, we would look to, have to look at cost of relocating it and cost of, of conveying that water to that location. Um, and, and do an exercise to determine what a, what the most appropriate rate would be to recover those costs.
Thanks, Counsel Hicks. Go ahead, Counsel Schenk.
Now, Mike, get your calculator together. Just see if I did this math correctly. Uh, one cubic meter is a thousand meters, correct? So we sell a thousand meters on an average tank with, that holds one of those, you know, those totes that they sell is generally a thousand meters. All right. So make a dollar eighty-seven on each one of those tanks. I argued this beforehand. You got a sewage plant, you've got some bills up there. I mean, you can't get, uh, what can you get for two dollars and fifty cents? You know what I mean? So, so all I'm saying is, is I, I know it's set for a coin, but all I'm saying is, is charge a little bit more, two dollars. That's my, that's my feelings. But there we go.
Yeah, thanks, Counsel Schenk. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with respect to fees and charges more broadly, what, uh, I've included in senior leadership's mandate letter and particularly, uh, the treasurer is to do a fee and charges review across the board. Um, I think what council will find is, uh, there are some of our fees and charges that we might, uh, charge, similar to septic hauling where we found, uh, a low rate was attracting people from various regions to our facility having wear and tear. You might find, um, unintended consequences of a water rate that might be getting water haulers from different places. I'm not saying that's happening, but that is a possibility. And so if you take a look at fees and charges across the board, I think, um, making sure that we understand what the goal of the fees and charges, uh, would necessarily be. Um, and, um, aligning, you know, what you're charging to that. So for example, if, if the goal on recreation fees were to, um, enable, um, disadvantaged families to be able to access sporting, um, that would be a different fee than if your goal was cost recovery. Um, so taking a look at fees and charges across the board is something in the treasurer's mandate letter because I'm not confident that our fees and charges are either equitable with other municipalities across the board, nor am I confident that they would align with the will of council with your strategic policy goals. And that's why that is in the treasurer's mandate letter. Um, so on the water item, I would agree with you, but I think it's broader than that.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you, through your worship. Uh, Michael, I just want to thank the staff and everybody that got that medium station back up and running when it was down for a short period. I know it's well-used. I line up there quite frequently myself and, uh, I couldn't believe the number of calls I was getting about, uh, you know, it being down. And then when it was being operated at, at certain hours while the guys were doing it manually, that was very grateful, grateful, uh, and appreciated for the ones that do rely on that, uh, medium fill station. And, uh, I, I, I agree with Counselor Hicks that we need to give ample notice as to where it would be relocated when that time comes. And I'm hoping we're not without it for any length of period of time because there are a pile of people that do require, do, uh, rely on that. And I do want to again, thank you for getting it back up and into service as quick as we did.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, through your worship, uh, thank you Deputy, Deputy Mayor Calver. I'll certainly pass that along to staff. It, uh, certainly took a little bit of juggling to make sure that we were able to have an operator there for certain periods of time as we waited. Uh, some of those critical parts to, to come back in stock and get delivered. So, uh, certainly we'll, uh, we'll pass that along to staff. But the intent would be, um, to not be without a fill station, uh, and have a plan of action to relocate. Uh, you commission a new fill station and then, uh, decommission, uh, the existing one as needed.
Excellent, thank you. Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there anything else? Seeing none, and I, I think I, I got to concur with you, uh, Michael. This is maybe the time to do it. This is when we, um, we built the new station, we look at how we disperse the water out of there. It may not be a machine where you put coins in, it may be a card, it may be a lot of different things, but we can assess all those things once, uh, once we know where we're going and when we're going to move there anyways. And then, uh, and we'll make it as painless as possible for, for our folks. Because I got to agree with Deputy Mayor Calver. It, it is a facility that's used, uh, fairly extensively. So.
And, uh, yes, your worship, that, that'd be the intent. We, we would hope to align it with, um, a, a budget cycle so that we can look at overall capital costing of the relocation and, and look at, um, you know, methods of payment and, and ultimate, uh, fee collection to offset those capital costs.
Yeah, great, thanks. Uh, if there's nothing else, moving on to the executives, uh, executive services, Santorini Mediterranean Grill, twenty twenty-five patio outdoor license. Is there anything, uh, in that report that anyone has any question or comments for? Uh, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, see the reply on again this year for a, um, a outdoor patio. Uh, the eleven o'clock, eleven PM. Is, is there any way that can be changed to ten PM? Is that, is that something that we can do or is that pretty well set in stone?
We'll have to direct that, I think, to Madam Clerk. I think she can comment on that.
Through your worship, that would require an amendment to our bylaw. I can confirm that we are currently, uh, this bylaw is one that is under review and that is um, an area that we can flag for further, uh, review and, and recommended updates by staff.
Okay, thank you. I've just heard from various neighbors around that sometimes the music gets a little loud and sometimes not good music. Anyways, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there anything else? If not, we'll move on to executive services, Royal Canadian Legion, twenty twenty-five temporary extension of premises. Is there anything in that report? Seeing none, growth and infrastructure joint microservice contract with the County of Lennox and Addington. Is there anything in that report anyone has any questions for or would like to highlight? Seeing none, uh, delegated authority memo, cooperative purchasing of roadside spraying. Is there anything in that report anyone would like to, uh, bring any attention to or highlight? Seeing none, Parks Recreation, oh, sorry, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you through your wor, your, you, your worship. Uh, Michael, is this, uh, your, I talked to you on this one for the roadside spraying?
Uh, through your worship, it would depend on the nature of the question, but potentially.
During our recreation meeting, there was brought up about the, um, there's a lot of the, uh, that reg, or not the reg weed, but the, uh, noxious weed along the, the trail there, the going down through Springside Park and that. And, and it was, it was asked if we could possibly get that sprayed this year and, uh, be in close proximity to the water. I'm not sure how that would, would work or not work, but it's, uh, was something that we thought we'd ask about.
Through your worship, I don't know the answer offhand depending on the type of, uh, chemical plan to be used. Um, but what I can commit to is, is getting, uh, a report back at the next meeting, uh, with an answer to that or, or a follow-up email as soon as I get it.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Thanks, Michael. Is there anything else? Seeing none, the Parks Recreation and Culture Library HVAC replacement. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions or comments about? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, through your, your worship. Um, yeah, seeing the quotes come in and, uh, all very close and, uh, whatnot. Um, I, I just have, we have a local, uh, a local, uh, business very, very close to where it should have been for the, uh, the quote. And I know when they did the, um, the, uh, the last work they did, they actually come in under budget, uh, or under, under their quote what they wanted to do. And I just know the service, the, the level of service that we receive from this company and I, I find it kind of a little appalling. We're going to go out of town. We're going to go out of town spending taxpayers' money out of Napanee when we have somebody right here in Napanee that could do it for, you know, not much over what the quote should be. I just it's just my opinion. I mean, I'd like to keep keep as much local as we can and keep the service we get because I do believe the service that we do get from this local company is second to none. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, at some point when we bring back to procurement's policy, we can take a look at what is within our authority and our ability. At this point, it is the low bid on anything that goes out that would be winning based on the criteria that we have. But we can certainly during the period of taking a look at the procurement policy about what are the ability to provide local content as an aspect of consideration? I'm not familiar with that at the moment, but we can certainly bring that back.
Okay, thank you, because, you know, you got local businesses paying taxes, employing local people paying taxes. It's just nice, it would be nice to keep it local. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Is there anything further? Yeah, Councilor Shank.
It because you have a policy in place, so it's very hard. So you're going to take the lower bid, which I understand. All right, so where is just that when you're doing that review, all right? The one thing, and you guys have been doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but what I always taken in place is that this this firm did the South Fred, all right? They came on under budget quite a bit from what I understand. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know, Chris, so if I recollect what it was. So all I know is that if there's been a problem and there's been a company that's been local that's been really good and if they're fairly close, it's like the point system when you give out a grant today, pass this, pass this, pass this, pass this. And if they saved a lot this time and they've been doing above and beyond, it's I I don't want to micromanage. At the same time, you want to have a policy that gives you a flexibility, but you want to have a policy that you're not, you know what I mean? That somehow, how do you, how do you do a policy that you have like a scorecard that you 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 lost it for a small amount, but at the same time, if something happens, we're still going to phone you, you know what I mean? So you'll come and we'll do your after hour management, but you're not going to get the the cookie to put it in, you know what I mean? So I I agree with what the deputy mayor is saying, but so when you're reviewing that, that's my thoughts also. I I believe that, you know, that Brian is correct in his line of thinking. I have a similar line of thinking on this way, but it's very hard to make a policy in place to put all that in. So how you guys work that, let's see if you can do it.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I I would say that it would come down to policy objectives and the weighting of various aspects of things when they come in. It would also go to what are the specific broader laws that we would have to consider in terms of not discriminating against one country, or sorry, one company or another based on geography? So we would take a look at all of those different things. But to answer your question, Councilor Shank, I think we get there by prescribing different weight to various aspects of the people who have provided a bid. And maybe it's not council's will to have low bid as, you know, the the largest form of weight. You'd like to have different criteria. And that's how we would be able to do that. What I would like to avoid, though, is leaving it up to individual personal judgment about whether or not they feel something is a better deal than something else. My expectation of staff when they are going through bids is that they are using their judgment to see how a bid matches against criteria and how that criteria is weighted and having that decided in it, like having the criteria decided in advance. And that's where they're using their judgment, not whether or not they personally feel something might be a good idea. I'd like us to avoid that.
Thanks, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else? Seeing none, the Financial IT Services Phone System three month update. Is there anything in that report anyone has any questions or comments about? Seeing none, Financial and IT Services Activity Report, April of twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions about or is there anything anyone would like to highlight? Seeing none, Parks Recreation and Culture Active Report, April of twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in that report anyone had any com- comments about or any questions of? Seeing none, Activity Report, Executive Services, is April twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions or comments about? And I believe, Mr. Grant, you may want to to highlight something in that report.
I do for Executive Services. So one of the things within the Executive Services Activity Report that I would point out for council is under bylaw services. In the coming days, we expect there to be a significant increase of homeless encampments in non-sensitive areas within parks. The reason being is that the warming center we see is going to be closing at the end of this month at the Morning Star Mission. As a result of that, many of the individuals who've been served overnight at that facility, we fully expect to find their way to tented encampments somewhere within the broader Napanee area. The this will be the first full year that we will see the encampment protocol, which council passed at the end of last year enforced. And what that will look like is, you know, working with community partners, which we've been doing to make sure the areas that are deemed sensitive don't necessarily have encampments in them and that the areas that are not deemed within the encampment protocol to be sensitive, that those would not be subject to removal in the same way. And so I just point that out that the reason we would see those increases is because of the warming center. It's not because there's a flood of new individuals in town. It's just that options during the winter months of where those individuals would have gone are no longer available and that will result in encampments in parks, but or in green areas. But what you will see is in line with the encampment protocol that council has approved. We will be educating and enforcing on those grounds. I am aware that community partners have been using the education material that bylaw services has provided to let them know where those areas are. And that information is available on our website, but I just wanted to point that out to members of council because come the beginning of May, we will see a difference in green areas is what we anticipate, and that is the reason why.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, and just one additional thing to add on to that. As much, like if if council receives questions or concerns from residents, we really encourage you to direct them to the E one one tool. There's the ability to specifically drop a pin where the encampment of concern is on a map. Our bylaw officers will be responding to those and prioritizing those calls as part of their response. It's going to be part of our regular workload, but definitely with a focus area in May, knowing that we are going to see this shift in the community. And if, even if an encampment is in one of those non-sensitive use areas, it is still required to abide by the rest of the bylaw with respect to overall size, number of individuals and close proximity, fire safety, general site safety. Those rules all do still need to be followed as well. So if there's any concerns around those, that can absolutely be reported to our staff. We'll be followed up on.
Thanks, Jessica. Is there anything else? Moving on to Activity Report, Growth and Infrastructure Services. Is there anything in that report that anyone would like to highlight or anything they have any questions of? Seeing none, Activity Report, Fire Department, March and April of twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions of or comments about? And finally, the Access E one one report, March of twenty twenty-five. Is there anything in that report anyone has any questions of or comments about? Seeing none, we will look for emotion. That council consent to the approval of following routine items. The minutes of the regular session of council dated April eighth, twenty twenty-five to be adopted as presented. The draft Market Square Advisory Committee minutes of April third, twenty twenty-five to be received for information. That correspondence for information items dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five be received. The council received for information, the endorsed and endorsed the following proclamations, May fourth to eleventh, twenty twenty-five is Emergency Preparedness Week. March twelfth, twenty twenty-five is Fibromyalgia Awareness Week. May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five is the V O N week and June twenty twenty-five is Pride Month. The council received for information, the inquiry follow-up medium water filling station report. The council received for information, the Executive Services of Santorini Mediterranean Grill twenty twenty-five outdoor patio license report. And further, the council approved the outdoor patio license for Santorini Mediterranean Grill for May first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at fifty-four County Road Eight, Napanee, subject to the following conditions. That the owner shall install a maximum of twelve tables and seventy-two chairs on the patio in accordance with bylaw zero four thirty-eight. Ensure the outdoor patio was cleared and closed by eleven P M since the patio was facing onto the residential street, Alfred Street. Ensure the patio is removed on or before September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and ensure that the patio meets all other conditions of bylaw number zero four three eight and all public health and provincial requirements. The council received for information, the Executive Services Royal Canadian Legion twenty twenty-five temporary extension of premises report. And further, that council of the Town of Greater Napanee has no objections to the proposed temporary extended license area in front of Branch one thirty-seven of the Royal Canadian Legion at twenty-six Mill Street, Napanee, Ontario. In order to host an outdoor barbecue for the following events and celebrations, Saturday, May third, twenty twenty-five, the fire truck pull fundraiser in support of Veterans Crosswalk from twelve till eight P M. Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five, Canada Day from twelve P M to eight P M. Saturday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, start of Legion Week from twelve P M to eight P M. Saturday, twenty September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, end of Legion Week from twelve P M to eight P M. That council received for information, the Growth and Infrastructure Joint Microservice Contract with the County of Lennox and Addington. Growth and Infrastructure Services Report and for the council that council award section C of the joint tender to the Low Bid Miller Paving Limited for the sum of two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars, ninety-seven cents, including payable H S T. And further, that council authorizes the mayor and the C E O to execute the joint contract. That council received for information, information, the memorandum of delegated authority under procurement policy by law, that council received for information, Parks Recreation and Culture Library HVAC Replacement Report. And for the council approved the purchase of the five ton A C unit and matching furnace for seventeen thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars plus H S T from Cairo Mechanical. That council received for information, the Financial and IT Services Phone System three month update report. That activity reports for Parks and Recreation Culture, Growth and Infrastructure, Executive Services, Fire Department and Financial and IT Services for the month of April, twenty twenty-five and the Access E one one report for March of twenty twenty-five, items eight point one three through eight point one eight be received for information. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calvert, seconded by Councilor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Next, Madam, item for discussion or for consideration, Growth and Infrastructure, four fifty-eight, Bridge Street West, West Bridge Estates, Phase twelve, Draft Plan of Subdivision and Zoning Bylaw Amendment. And I see that Michael is coming to the front. So, Michael, whenever you're ready, the floral beers.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. So following the February twenty-fifth public meeting, staff worked with the developer and their consultant team to review items that were brought up during the meeting, the public meeting on February twenty-fifth. We had a number of internal review meetings and and meetings with the the development proponents. And ultimately, we've we've settled on proposing recommending approval for the draft plan of subdivision as it was proposed and presented on February twenty-fifth. The two two items that I'll highlight that are contained within the the planning report are, one of the the main concerns was the retention of the trees between the development lands and the existing lands to the east. The grading plan has been adjusted to show the the strip of land to be left in a maintained in a in a natural state and that all grading and stormwater infrastructure is to be located on the west side of that. So effectively, all usable yard space and conveyance of stormwater would be on the west side of the five meter strip of of trees that the development team has left in place. And that a draft, a condition of draft approval is proposed where retention of that strip of land be be included in the final plan of subdivision agreement. So the mechanism that the town would have and and area residents would have if there's any modifications being made to that is that the town would be able to enforce the subdivision agreement against future owners of each individual parcel on which the 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 strip of trees is located ultimately. So we believe that's an appropriate avenue to address the concerns that were brought up. I would highlight that, given that this is a low density form of development that is abutting an existing low density built form, there is no policy mandate to require buffering in this capacity. This is something that the developer solely took, took their own initiative on and and on their own accord, left that strip of of trees with the intent to provide a a visual buffer between the new development and the existing development to the east. But from a policy perspective, there really isn't anything that would require that buffering between two low density development uses ultimately. Now, if there were an apartment building proposed that's a higher density use, there would certainly be a buffering requirement in that capacity, but single detached, but a budding, a single detached or semi-detached, you know, or a budding in the rear yard of a single detached, they're both considered a low density built form. So we believe that we've landed on a good middle ground where the 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 strip of land is is maintained and we have some ability to see through the 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 ultimate intent of that by being able to enforce that agreement against future owners of the land on which that's those strips of trees are located. The other item is related to the parkland conveyance that's proposed. In in reviewing the technical engineering design drawings, there was not at the time a a full floodplain assessment that was undertaken. Quinney Conservation was satisfied that a thirty meter setback from the water course's edges was sufficient to ensure that there were no natural hazards present and that development was located outside of that. But given that this water course would traverse part of that that parkland to be dedicated to the town, we staff felt it would be pertinent for for the for council to include a condition in the conditions to draft approval, requiring the developer to prove that we would be able to build a trail and cross over that water course. So with the intent to connect it to the the parkland to the south. So the intention would be that residents of the new development lands would be able to go from north to south to access the active parkland and the trails, and and this would become part of a contiguous trail system ultimately. But we do want to have more more investigation done to understand exactly what any limitations might be with with regard to building a trail over that water course and what what sort of capital costs might need to be considered in in building a, you know, a pedestrian crossing, for example. If it's determined that there's, you know, a significant amount of land that's covered in floodplain through that more detailed assessment, then parkland, the the amount of parkland would be considered at a reduced rate and the offset would need to be made up in in the form of cash in lieu at the time of final plan approval. So that's something that we've built in. Those are, those are, that was an item that came up after the public meeting. I would answer any questions on those two items. We did put out the notice to the community following that public meeting about the the form in which additional comments could be provided. We did not receive any any additional written comments from the community following the public meeting. So ultimately, staff are recommending approval of the applications as presented on the agenda this evening. And I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Michael, is there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. Michael, so you answered my first question, which I was going to ask because I looked through it and I couldn't find it about the seven meters and the trees and et cetera. So people are happy. You haven't heard anything else. They're happy with those that had concerns.
Through your worship, we we have not heard from any, any anybody following that public meeting. But we didn't door knock, for example, and, you know, solicit comment in that regard, but, you know, But, um, you know, following that, that public meeting, the issuance of the, uh, the, um, uh, public notice on, on, uh, the town's social media channels. We, we haven't received anything further a- and since publication of the agenda, no.
Um, so on page sixteen of the report, which shows the, the plan for the subdivision. There's a six meter right of way between lots twelve and thirteen. So that goes down and does like a little divot to the, the left. Um, that block thirty two, that's all going to be left is open green space. And it's that water course you're talking about being able to put a bridge over, yes?
Through your, through your worship, yes, that, that is correct. Um, so that six meter, uh, wide access would be multipurpose. So it would, it would give, uh, pedestrian access and it would give the town access to the stormwater management pond in the future for, for future maintenance. You know, in twenty years when they're, when they're due for their first cycle of maintenance. Um, I, I forgot to mention, uh, as well, but, uh, included within the draft conditions would be, uh, is that, um, any existing dead ash trees that are, that are in that area. Uh, be removed prior to conveyance too, just so we're not inheriting that, that.
Thinking ahead, I love it, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks, is there, uh, Counselor Shank?
Just, yeah, oh, that's just smart thinking, Mike. Uh, I never thought of the ash tree thing, you've been thinking of every, I just wanted to confirm. It's a combination of both or five percent of prior to draft plan approval still, right? Because you're maxing out at the five percent. So when you're talking about the, you know, the bridge and other stuff, you're taking a combination if it warrants it because of the stormwater management pond.
Through your worship, so the, um, the amount of parkland to be dedicated is five percent of the land area ultimately. Um, I think you're proposing well in excess of that, uh, do you remember the number, fifteen? Yeah, they're, they're proposing well in excess of the, the, uh, net minimum under Planning Act. Um, so if it's determined that, you know, a good portion of that is uncovered by floodplain, then that would reduce the amount that they're conveying that's usable, for example. And if, if it results in a, a reduced rate that's, you know, less than five percent in area, then the difference would be made up in cash in lieu. Through your worship, correct. Yep, no, that's right. And, uh, yeah, the intent ultimately is to be able to tie this, uh, this parkland into the parkland to the south so that it's all one larger usable park space.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Shank, thanks, Michael. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the growth and infrastructure services, four fifty eight Bridge Street West subdivision planning report for the lands. Known legally as part lot fifteen, session one, part four on plan twenty nine R three zero zero one. Save and accept for part one on plan twenty nine R one zero two nine four, former geographic township of Richmond, now in the town of Greater Napanee. And further that, as the applications facilitate an appropriate form of land development constitute good land use planning. And are in the public interest, council approved the draft plan of subdivision P L S U B D twenty twenty four zero one three. As identified within the attachment one of the planning report appended to report S R eight five seven dash twenty twenty five. And zoning by law amendment P L Z A C O twenty twenty four zero one four. As the applications are consistent with the planning, provincial planning statement confirm with conform with the Lennox and Adden County official plan. Conform with the town of Greater Napanee official plan, implement, implement appropriate land use permissions and controls through the implementing zoning by law amendment. And enable development that would be compatible with the existing and planned future uses on the subject lands. Subject to the following conditions that are in our agenda. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Uh, growth and infrastructure Springside Meadows subdivision servicing for existing developed properties. And Michael, you're going to speak to that as well?
Yes, thank you, worship. Uh, and so with the, the ongoing servicing work for the Springside Meadows subdivision. Uh, the contractor has indicated that they intend to, uh, commence, uh, water servicing, uh, sooner than they had originally anticipated. Um, so that's what's bringing this report on, uh, in short order. We weren't able to foresee its need, uh, on the forward agenda. So it kind of came up, uh, a little bit last minute, uh, in, in the week, uh, last week. But we have received, um, pricing associated with servicing fourteen properties on Old Hamburg Road, County Road Two and Champlain Street. Now would be the time to undertake this servicing of these private, uh, private lots. While the road is open, while the water main is being installed, uh, there would not be a need for future road cuts. Um, and, and, you know, cutting into an existing main when and if somebody were to ask to connect after the fact, after the water main is installed. The, the overall cost that, that staffer proposing, uh, so with, with pricing provided by the contractor. And, um, staff undertaking a portion of the work with regard to, uh, doing surface treatment. It, the total amount would be around a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, a hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And what we're proposing is that the contractor undertake excavation, installation of the main, installation of, of service laterals. Um, uh, trench reinstatement up to, um, surface treatment, or not surface treatment, but rather, um, uh, bed, road base essentially. And what that would do is give the town the ability to add this into our, um, twenty twenty five surface treatment program. Where we would have a, a better preferred rate to undertake that surface treatment if we were the one initiating it with our, our, um, vendor of record. So the pricing that was initially provided by the contractor included that scope of work. But we, we crunched the numbers on our end and determined that we can do this, this portion of the work for a much cheaper cost. Uh, and it really would not be much staff time involved to, uh, to administer that. So that amount was removed from the overall cost provided by the contractor. And we've, we've included within the hundred and ninety thousand, uh, the total costs that the, that the town would be able to do it for. This is outside of the requirement for the, uh, development of the subdivision. So this would be, uh, a town borne cost and staffer proposing that we, we would use the impost reserve fund to cover the costs. Uh, if council chooses to proceed. What we would al- also propose is that a draft area rated impost by law be, uh, applied to the, the lands that would be benefiting from these new service connections. And ultimately, what that would do is give, uh, council the mechanism to recoup the capital costs that would be expended during its installation. And as people connect, we would be able to recoup that cost in it as a surface connection, uh, fee, if you will. The reason this isn't, uh, I'm using the word impost rather than development charges, which we speak about more often. The impost by law is a bylaw that we used to operate under, um, related to new connections and new development. Those costs are now captured under, uh, development charges for new development. But the impost by law is still applicable for existing development connecting to new infrastructure. So there's, there's two mechanisms, the impost is applicable in this regard. Development charges are applicable for solely new development, new houses connecting to new infrastructure. This is existing homes connecting to new infrastructure. So we could look at an area rated by law that would cover up to the costs that we would be incurring, uh, for installing this infrastructure. And staff proposed that we bring back a draft by law for consideration, uh, if council chooses to proceed in the, in this manner. But we see that this is, um, the, the best time to do this. The roads open, the water mains being installed, you know, it's a matter of installing saddles and laterals and cutting new trenches. Much easier to do, uh, and far less capital costs than having to rip the road up on a, on a one off basis. And then we don't have, you know, asphalt mixed in with surface treatment. And it, it just would be a, be a much cleaner finish, uh, ultimately to, to that road once complete. So, uh, available for any questions, but that, uh, that is, uh, staff's recommendation is that we, we would proceed at this time.
Great, thanks, uh, thanks, Michael, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Uh, through you, your worship, uh, Michael, so this is water, obviously, we're talking about, what about sewage? Are we going to be o- offering the sewage hookup as well?
Through your worship, so, excuse me, the, uh, sanitary sewer, um, connection to existing infrastructure that would service the subdivision. Goes under C, the C N rail line and connects to Yeoman Street. Sanitary sewer does not run along Old Hamburg Road and there really wouldn't be a way to, uh, facilitate it through the development site. Water, we have the ability to go up and down and the like. But in this case, elevations are, are a little bit of a challenge, so it'd be, it would be tough to install both at the same time. Um, we have had, I would note too, we have had, uh, quite a number of individuals inquiring about connecting. Uh, so there seems to be some, some good interest even without, uh, the wa- the, the services being installed. The people, people hear about the subdivision, they see some work going on and, and they've, they've been, they've reached out. I'd say about five or six, uh, people have so far, um, on a one off basis. So there is some interest at this point.
No, I, I, I agree, I think that would be the time to do it because it'd be, it makes total sense versus tear up a new road next year. Tear up another section of new road the year after, it's, uh, it's there. And like you say, we can recoup our cost if they so choose to hook up. And I, I can't imagine if you had perfectly good water running by your house, why you wouldn't hook up.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver, Counselor, uh, Counselor Penel, and I'll go to Counselor Hicks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Michael, thanks for this report. Uh, how did you come up with these, these households?
Through your worship, so the planned water main, um, route is effectively from the elevated, uh, from the tank at the top of the public works yard hill. Down along the access, um, lane way up, up the hill to the yard. Across Old Hamburg Road, like across County Road Two, a- along Old Hamburg Road. Down and into the site, partially up Champlain Street and partially down, uh, Old Hamburg Road around that corner. Um, so effectively, any property that the water main was passing by or within, uh, a very short distance. That a small section could be added on to, uh, on to the main to service that, that, um, home. That was how it was, whatever was closest to what was planned, uh, for the subdivision.
Okay, thank you, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but I need your help on it. Um, there's one more house up Champlain Street. Is that because of an elevation change or why are we not going to the end of that street?
Through your worship, so the reason that that was excluded, uh, from the listing was because the entrance to the subdivision lands is, um. Partway up Champlain Street of, uh, just to the south of the, I'll say the first two houses on Champlain, if you will, going from south to north. The, by getting water all the way to the very end, it would be quite a costly extension of that main. Um, certainly something that we can consider, uh, doing. But, uh, at this point in time, we, we felt it was a lengthy stretch, um, and might not see the return on the capital.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Penel, go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, worship, Michael, yeah, so just to follow up on Counselor Penel. So it's going to be basically everything north of Switzerville Road. So if I'm, if I'm driving down Old Hamburg and I get to Switzerville Road, anything on Switzerville Road is not included. Or Dollar Crescent, that's all out of scope because it's too far past the subdivision.
So through your worship, so phase one necessitates what the water main coming down across number two, down Old Hamburg. And partway down Old Hamburg to around eighty one, around eighty one Old Hamburg Road. In subsequent phases, the water main is going to extend with same, within the Old Hamburg Road allowance. And ultimately down towards, um, the area that you, that you're speaking of. So it would, it would capture another five or six houses in the future. The reason it's coming down all, all along that way is, one, it provides further opportunity for growth in the area broadly speaking. And provides better looping internally to, uh, to that subdivision. So as it fa- as the, the phasing progresses over time, there will be extensions over time. Um, not a tomorrow, uh, thing to have this installed all the way down to the, to the southerly reach of the subdivision. But it around that, if you're looking on a map, one sixty nine, um, Old Hamburg Road would be the last house that could potentially connect. I- in the future when the water main were to get there. This is solely looking at phase one and the, the limit would be, I believe it was eighty one, uh, Old Hamburg Road now. Regarding Dollar Crescent and the, I'll say the westerly end of Switzerville Road. Nothing to say that, that the water main couldn't be extended in the future, but it's not required under this subdivision at this point in time.
Good, thanks, thanks, Counselor Hicks, is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the growth and infrastructure Springside Meadows subdivision servicing for existing developed properties report. And further, that council approved the scope of work identified within the staff report for servicing a total of fourteen properties. On Old Hamburg Road, County Road Two and Champlain Street. And further, that council authorized the mayor clerk to execute an amendment to the pre servicing agreement. To incorporate the additional scope of work for the identified pricing within the staff report. And further, that the total project cost be funded from the town's impost reserve fund for a total of a hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And further, that council directs staff to prepare a draft area rated impost by law to collect costs incurred for the scope of work identified within the staff report. And further, that prior to council contemplating an area rated impost by law, that a draft of the by law be presented to council for consideration and direction. Prior to the public notification period for such by law. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. And I think at this point, folks, we'll take about a fifteen minute break, we're close to eight thirty and, uh, it'll be time for a break, I think. So we'll see you back in about fifteen minutes. Thanks. Welcome back, folks. Uh, and we're moving on through the agenda at nine point three. The, uh, growth and infrastructure former CN spur line bridge closure. And Mr. Nobes, you're going to speak to this. So, uh, when you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. Um, so at the, uh, I believe it was the March eleventh council meeting. Um, the council passed a resolution, uh, requesting staff to look into options to, um, close access to the former CN spur line bridge across the four oh one. So staff have provided, uh, a proposed method of restricting access consisting of rigid construction fencing panels, uh, locking mechanisms, um, secure fasteners to the bridge deck and web stiffeners of the bridge in order to, um, uh, provide council a fulsome understanding of, of the cost and time, uh, and, and method in which staff would recommend, uh, closing that access. Um, so we provided that in, in the report, uh, and we've also included, uh, within the recommendation, I just wanted to clarify this point. Um, where it reads that in further that council authorized staff to begin discussions with the MTO to plan for the future removal of the bridge. Uh, just wanted to highlight. So that was, that was, uh, based on the March eleventh, um, meeting from the ad hoc committee. There was some recommendation that, uh, or an ask of the, of the, uh, council and staff to discuss, uh, future provision for providing access across the four oh one for future pedestrian, uh, connectivity. Uh, and to, um, uh, discuss the timeline for removal of the bridge ultimately. So that's, that was the basis of, of, of including this. However, the intent of staff is not to, not to seek authorization to remove the bridge at all. Our, our intention with that is effectively to, uh, understand more about the implications of the four oh one expansion, uh, the timelines thereof, um, uh, you know, parties responsible for removal of the bridge, is, would there be any reinstatement? We've had MTO unofficially verbally say, you know, when the expansion happens, that bridge is going to be a constraint. It needs to come out to widen the highway and that they would not replace the bridge. So we're looking to get that more, um, formalized with the MTO so that we can provide a better plan of action, uh, in a future recommendation to council. But I would note that part one of the ask from the committee, which was, you know, in discussions with the MTO, start the conversation about providing access, uh, and, and, um, connectivity from the south to the north side of the four oh one. The, uh, MTO has, has started a, uh, technical advisory committee on the two phases of the expansion between Belleville and Kingston. We're study area two, uh, the study area one, which is from Belleville to east, east end of, uh, Shannonville. And then study area two is from there, uh, just past us toward, uh, towards Odessa, I believe, actually. Um, so we're study area two. We've already had one TAC meeting. Uh, I've, I've brought that point up personally and said, we want to ensure that in your future planning, that we have great ample opportunity to provide comment on where we'd like to see future pedestrian access across the bridge and future ability to service under, under the four oh one for water and wastewater and, uh, you know, hydro, et cetera. So we, we've, we've made MTO well aware of that and reiterated it, uh, both in writing and at the TAC meeting. It's landed in the minutes. It's very much on their radar. Uh, so the intent of staff really is just to understand timelines. Um, you know, who's responsible for the removal, who bears the cost? Is there any, any reinstatement? Those sorts of questions that we don't have concrete answers to at this point in time. So, uh, I just wanted to clarify that point. But, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have on, on the, on the, uh, proposed, um, um, blocking of access and, uh, uh, the second part of the, uh, recommendation.
Great. Thanks, Michael. I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in first.
Uh, thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, just to add to, um, Mr. Nobes' comments. Um, you will recall from the ad hoc trail committee that they had talked about, um, how they wanted to expand the rail network or the trail network. Uh, it anticipated, uh, extension, um, up Goodyear Road, not necessarily across that particular bridge. Um, that wasn't the recommended path for expansion for the trail network, nor would an expansion of the highway facilitate the bridge because the road would be wider than the bridge, um, which wouldn't necessarily work. Um, so as a, a follow-up to that, what council can expect, uh, and what we will, uh, obviously communicate with the ad hoc trail committee is that there'll be a report coming forward, uh, indicating that this is something that's going to have to go to the budget process because there will be cost implications, uh, and work paying implications for some of this, uh, this work, uh, in line with the recommendations of the ad hoc committee, who did indicate that some of the work, uh, for the trails is beyond their capacity.
It's just an additional warning that, you know, a reflective sign that, that's easily illuminated if somebody's riding at night, for example, and they aren't able to see the barricades, it just stands out better.
Okay, thanks, I never thought of that. Should we have two then, one on either side by any chance?
Yeah, we can certainly add another one. I think we looked at where the most recent known traffic was coming from and put it on that side, but we can certainly add another one.
Okay, thank you. As I said, it's such a small thing, but I just, I just had to ask it, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel for now. Is there anything else? Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna move to staff recommendation.
Okay, we, we do have a recommendation and I've, I see we, we may be able to expand on it and clarify it, but that council received for information, the growth and infrastructure services, former CN spur line bridge closure report, and further that council authorized staff to install a barrier system to close access to the former CN spur line bridge that spans the highway 401. And further that council authorizes staff to begin discussions with the MTO to seek clarity regarding the future of the bridge as it relates to the planned highway 401 expansion. Hey, would that be accurate, Deputy Mayor Cowherd?
Yes, and yeah, that would be it.
We have a mover, do we have a seconder? Counsel Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Counsel Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. Just for those that are watching tonight, and I know some people have left the audience, but the ad hoc trails committee report that was provided by Mike Sewell and Mark Hamill took place in a public meeting, regular council session on March 11th. So anybody that's interested in following up on this to see what the plan is and where some of the proposed crossings are in future, by all means, look at that report because that's coming directly from the trails committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hicks. And I was, I was, thank you for bringing that up. I was going to mention that, that this actually was a recommendation of that ad hoc committee who, we have, we have six very competent people working on that and have done a enormous amount of work with respect to the trail system. And, and we'd like to thank them for their hard work. You know, there's, those folks are folks that had eyes and feet on the ground and looked at this thing fairly extensively. So I just want to thank them and thank you, Counsel Hicks, for bringing that up. So is there anything else? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, the motion's carried. Next up is executive services, strong mayor powers. And I see Madam Clerk is moving to the front, so whenever it gets settled in, Jess, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, your worship and council. I hope you will indulge me for a moment here. I am going to talk a little bit longer than I normally do, just because I think this is a bit of a, this is a big thing for, for us and for a lot of other municipalities. So on April 9th, the province announced that it would be bringing forward legislation to expand strong mayor powers to 169 additional municipalities. They have indicated this expansion is being made to single and lower tier municipalities with councillors, or councils with seven or more members. And that this is being done with a goal to expand housing in Ontario. The purpose of this report is to provide general information about what this change will mean for Greater Napanee specifically and what council in the community can expect to see as next steps. I do just want to flag that this bill has not actually been introduced yet. It is scheduled, we assume, to be introduced next week in order to go into effect on May 1st. So there are still a few unknowns and if anything changes from this report, once we see the text of that bill, we will let council know as soon as possible. But assuming that the bill passes as announced and it is just adding a list of municipalities to an existing regulation, on May 1st, we would see the following changes. The mayor has the sole authority to appoint and dismiss the CAO unless the mayor chooses to delegate this power back to council. The mayor has the sole authority to appoint and dismiss department heads that are non statutory positions, i.e. not your clerk, treasurer, fire chief, chief building official, as the legislation says, those must be appointed by council unless the mayor chooses to delegate this back to council or to the CAO. Currently, our bylaw states that council has hiring and firing authority for general managers and statutory positions and the CAO has authority to manage staffing below that level. The mayor can create and assign functions to committees as defined under the act. We actually don't currently use that style of committee at all, so that is unlikely to create any changes for us. That would be a committee, for example, of your three members of council plus your treasurer is a finance committee. That's just not a model we use. The mayor can propose a bylaw to support a provincial priority. Currently, this is defined as building new homes and infrastructure to support those homes. If the mayor introduces the bylaw, it only needs three out of seven instead of four out of seven votes to pass and the mayor counts as one of those votes. The mayor can veto a bylaw if he believes it interferes with a provincial priority. This can either be announced in advance or up to two business days after the bylaw is passed. So we'll need to amend our procedure by law to account for how that's going to work in practice. The mayor can introduce an item of business at a council meeting and require council to vote on the matter at that meeting, i.e. can't be deferred or request an additional staff report if it advances a provincial priority. So we'll need to amend our procedure by law to define how that's going to work. The mayor has to introduce the budget by February 1, after which council has 30 days to vote on amendments to the budget. We do anticipate this to be our largest operational change and we'll be working to update our public consultation practices to account for this new timeframe. The mayor can give direction to members of staff, so this will require an amendment to our council staff relations policy, which currently states that council direction is given by way of resolution policy and bylaw. These powers are not absolute, there are additional requirements and limitations on how they're used. So as noted, some of these can be delegated back to council or the CAO. If a power can't be delegated, council can still override it with a two-third majority within certain set time limits. Any use of these powers must be made in writing and typically a justification for how this relates to a provincial priority needs to be attached. The mayor can't use any of these powers if they have a conflict of interest as defined in the municipal conflict of interest act for the matter under consideration. And these powers can't be used to waive any public notice and public consultation requirements. So for example, your planning applications, you would still have to have your published notice, your public hearing, your public meeting, you would, you'd still have to go through all of those steps. This couldn't be used to skip any of those steps. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Jessica. Is there any questions of Jessica? Counsel Schenk.
No. This is no slam against you, Terry. But we will all be gone here sooner or later. What my concern is, is if you have a doughhead mayor gets elected and you give him that much power and he can go ahead and by the whim, you know, and it's happened already, they get rid of the CAO and staff, just because they might have it personally. We have, we're elected free democracy. We can agree to disagree. But I have grave concerns. Not with this council, but when we're gone, that if you have a mayor that comes in and he, you know, and he doesn't believe in free speech of every, listen to every member of councils over the time and the pressure he does on the staff and the turmoil that he's done with the staff, it can wreck the whole municipality because any of the good staff is just going to say, see you later, we're out of here. All right? And I don't want to see all the work that we've done and the staff that we have lose it because during an election, you know, somebody doesn't have the basic concept about business, gets elected and then all of a sudden starts saying, I want you to do this, I want you to do that, wants to do this without any consult with council, discussion for or against what works, what doesn't work, getting staff input and doing it through the correct procedures. Because we've all agreed and disagreed amongst ourselves. I just hate to have one person, this is not you, Terry, don't get me wrong, but when you pack it in, I pack it in, or everybody else packs it in, you get a real wrong council and it can destroy municipality really quick. And that's what my concern is. I don't care how you guys work it or tweak it. I want it tweaked somehow that there's still the democracy has to be done to a certain degree. You know what I mean? That if you have it in writing, I just don't want to have somebody go ahead and say, oh, I'm, I'm King Tut, I'm going to do what I want and tell staff to do whatever else. Why should we even be here then? Because one person couldn't veto us and then one person could do it. So why even have the debate? That takes it right out of the, you know, that's my concern.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Did you want to weigh in, Jess, or? Well, that's fine, I can, I'll, I'll go afterwards.
So through your worship, the discussions that, I think we've only had this for a couple of weeks, so it's a little preliminary in our discussions, but I believe the intent of, of the mayor and of staff is to, as quickly as possible after this May 1 deadline, establish what our normal is going to look like, create that predictability that we've been trying to have as an organization, to create routines and establish processes of this is how we as a municipality define how these powers are going to be used. MMAH's advice has been, local municipalities might interpret this language to mean different things as best suits your own circumstances. So our goal is to define as much of that quickly with this term of council, establish what normal looks like, bake as much of it into bylaws and policies as we can. Could a new mayor overturn all of that day one, March, November 16th, 2026? Maybe, we don't know. Nobody's been in that situation yet to know. But it would certainly be a large breach of precedent that they would have to be overturning to do that. And they would have to believe that they had the will of the voters behind them to do that. And I think that's the best assurance that I can offer you.
Like, my concern is, is the damage would be done, all right? And the respect, respect is earned, it's not given. And after, so it's so hard to build the trust over time with staff and with everything else. And then all of a sudden, that's what my concern is. But you know, we're gonna, you guys are going to work it out and see what works, what doesn't work, what we can do, what we can't do, just to protect the future generations. That's what all I care.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Counsel Schenk. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Yeah, through your worship, I, I know this is legislated by the provincial government, but is this something we have to take part in or is it something we can opt out?
Through your worship, we don't know. The second round, the first round, when it was just Ottawa and Toronto was not optional. The second round was optional because you had to sign a housing pledge to opt in to receive the powers and some municipalities chose not to. We have not heard anything about a housing pledge or any opting in or out this time around, so we don't know. Some municipalities have passed motions saying, we don't want these powers. We don't know if that is going to have any impact on the bill that gets introduced next week.
Okay, thank you. And just further that, I don't think we are a big enough municipality to have a housing pledge, if I'm not mistaken. Michael can correct me on that, but.
Through your worship, that is correct. So the Building Faster Fund is a fund that the, the government gives grants to municipalities that have housing targets assigned by the province. If those municipalities meet or exceed their housing targets assigned by the province, the, the province effectively provides each municipality with a, with a check of a certain amount based on the housing units developed, but we don't have housing targets. So we're not able to access those funds under the Building Faster Fund.
Right, okay, thanks, thanks, Michael. I'm going to go to Ann, then I'll go to Counsel Norrie.
Thank you through you, your worship. So all of this, the way I understood this, when I read through it and listening to you, Jessica, and a brief chat with the mayor, this is all directly related to housing. It's not related to whether you want to build a new arena, it's not related to whether you're going to redo roads, it's all to do with housing. And my concern is not with the mayor or with council. My concern is with the province becoming very heavy-handed and saying, you know, Kingston signed some housing targets and there's a nice little bedroom community, nice small town, Napanee, they got lots of open fields there. Hey, we just gave them funding for a new water treatment plant. So we're going to call up the mayor and we're going to put the pressure on the mayor to open up where we don't want it opened up for development. That, that is my concern, so that the, the integrity of the town structure could be lost. Because by putting pressure directly on the mayor, they don't have to go through council because it's right there basically in black and white saying, we can go straight to the top. And is that likely to happen? I know I'm asking for somebody to look in a crystal ball, but, and I'm sort of looking across at Michael because, you know, the, the planning and the growth and the development of the town, I think you have your finger on that pulse pretty good. Is the potential there for them to now turn this around and start dictating to municipalities who's going to do what, when, and whether or not they're going to get any money for it?
Through your worship, I, I don't anticipate it for the fact that planning decisions still need to meet applicable provincial planning statement, county and town official plans and, you know, all the existing regulations and policy framework that exists today isn't changing. So I would say decisions still need to be made that are consistent with those in effect policies and regulations. So I don't foresee it. But again, it's tough to crystal ball, but I don't anticipate it.
Thanks, Counsel Hicks, Counsel Norrie.
Just on a little different vein, and it's, I'm not, I'm not comparing apples to apples, but three of us lived through two years of a state of emergency with unlimited power by a group that closed the door and we didn't know what happened. I'll be very blunt, we were treated like mushrooms, for lack of a better word. I don't see of the same situation now with this. We have different staff, but it was, to this day, we don't know money spent in that. So I'm aware of any authoritative power for one person. If we have a choice to vote it down, I would, just for that reason, because we were so burnt, I don't know if I could, not saying you, Terry, but I don't know if I could trust the system like that. And having lived through that, you'd have to live through it, understand that. I don't know if the other two feel the same way, but that's my two cents.
Thank you, Counsel Norrie. Counsel for now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counsel Norrie, I do feel exactly the same way. You probably word for word of what you said. The last council and this council has been fantastic at, at cleaning up some, some things with clarity, transparency to, to the residents. We've been doing a really good job of that. And whether with these strong powers, it does that or doesn't, it certainly is going to paint the picture that there is room for that again. So I take this whole thing as a slap in the face. I, I believe that this town is in a good place and, and that this council is working a great, great together. I do have a question, and I know that this is all crystal ball stuff, but I have a question and Mr. Nobes was just saying about it and we're talking about mandating to bill, but what happens in the case, let's talk about 458 Bridge Street right now, where I voted against that? What happens if all of council voted against it and then the mayor said, no, no, we're going to go ahead and do that? Is that something that could happen?
I think Jessica answered that question.
So through your worship, the mayor would have the power with one vote to veto a bylaw, but a bylaw doesn't, vetoing a bylaw doesn't compel action. The mayor needs at least one third of council with him to compel action. So not a majority, again, with a seven-member council, it's a difference of one vote. In a situation like that, the mayor would be the one to introduce the bylaw to say, I believe this bylaw advances a provincial priority of housing. I'm the one introducing it, therefore it only needs one third majority instead of a 50% plus one majority to pass. But he could not single-handedly against all of council force an action through. Again, the, and, and to speak to some of the other concerns that have been raised earlier, to use these powers, it needs to be done in writing. It needs to be done, copied to the clerk, the CAO council. It cannot be used secretively, it cannot be used in a phone call or a drop by an office and telling somebody to do something. It can't be used to contradict any existing legislation or ethical obligations that any staff members would hold as part of their professional associations. that any staff members would hold as part of their professional associations. It, it was still definitely represented a change in the way we do business. And I believe Mr. Grant wanted to make some comments as well.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things that I think will become clear is, is if and when the bill is introduced in the floor of the legislature, we'll have a decent understanding if it's the same legislation or if there's any amendments. But should it be introduced? The, my perspective and why we wanted to introduce this is, it would be the law of the land. And so we would figure out how best that we could present it for implementation. But I would also point out that the, the legislation itself, the, the regulations itself offers a degree of flexibility for each municipality to adopt it in slightly different ways than others, which I think is a, a design of, of the regulation. And what I would also say is, much like many of the other improvements that we've made under this council's watch in terms of creating predictability, how it is implemented in the systems that we put in place to ensure that this legislation is carried out as intended will be really important, and making sure that we have clear policies and procedures about how to do those things would be the most important part of the bill and any amendments that we would make. And so what I asked, you know, the clerk to do is to sort of outline, you know, what the legislation as we understand it would be, what the, the various decision points coming up would be. And so this is the beginning of a conversation. It's certainly not the end of a conversation, but we just thought it was important to put it in front of you. And, and I think it's important for people to understand that this isn't something that the municipal, municipality asked for. This would be something that the provincial level of government has indicated would be given to us. And the, the distinction there is, you know, as creatures of the province, as a municipality, if there is legislation that is put in place, it is our obligation to follow that legislation. And so I think it's just important for members of the public to understand that this is not something that the municipality went out and sought, or the 169 others. This would be something that, in the wisdom of cabinet, of the provincial government, that they felt was a provincial policy that they would like to see implemented within municipal government of those that have been identified, and I just thought was an important point to make.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
So different municipalities, do they have different rules for their strong mayor rule? Like, I mean, there was an incident that took place up in Arroyo, the 14th of April. And I just wondered if different municipalities have different strong mayor rules then?
So just to clarify through you, Mr. Mayor, there are elements of the regulation that can be held by the mayor or delegated back to council or to the chief administrative officer. So how different municipalities deal with that will mean, will mean that the legislation is being implemented differently depending on how they make those choices. That's what I meant by that, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is, yeah, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, this, this is really ambiguous and confusing. I mean, all this for housing, I mean, there's so much more to this than, I mean, for me, looking at this and reading what I've read so far, it sets democracy back to 1867. I mean, it, it's just, I sure as heck hope that when this is implemented by the provincial government, that there's amendments made to that legislation. Because this is really, really concerning. For one person in a community to have the power to negate the entire council, that's just not acceptable to me, and it shouldn't be acceptable to anybody who follows the rule of law. I mean, to me, it's just, it's way, way, way overboard, way too much, all in the name of housing. I just wanted to make those comments. Like I say, I, I would prefer that the provincial government say to hack out of municipal politics completely. This is, this is way, way, way gone too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. I'll go to Counselor Shank, I'll go to Counselor Penel.
Now that we're slamming the mayors on the whole in Ontario, I want to say one good thing. Terry, I've sat with a lot of mayors and a lot of councils, but you've given us everybody the latitude of speaking more than once, all right? You've kept us all informed, you've done everything. So what we're chewing about here is no slight on your behalf, all right? When you want to separate things, everybody has their tell, all right? But at no time are we saying this about you. It's just that what we want to do is protect the future generations of what we're building today. That's it. I just want to, for the people that are going like, oh, you know, all the mayors are bad. No, it's just that we want to protect, make sure that there's no things, you know? So just want to let you know that.
I appreciate that, Mike. I'll, I'll comment after, but go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just want some clarification. I, I know we've been talking about housing, but I don't think that this thing is all just around housing. Because if you read a summary of, of powers, choosing and appointing a municipality chief administration officer has nothing to do with housing. And, and proposing the budget has nothing to do with, I guess it does have a little bit to do with housing. But there's more to this than, I'm reading as more than this than just around housing. So could, could we have some clarification on what other councillors are saying or, or what their belief is, please?
So through your worship, this is a little bit unfortunate timing. Municipalities have been doing their best to share information quickly as they can in response to this. I will be learning a lot more about this on Friday, which doesn't help us tonight. I, I do know that some, the way that this is implemented in each municipality is, is different. We have been looking for examples of municipalities that we think take an approach that will mirror the relationship that we currently have with staff and council to try to provide that consistency and stability. We found some municipalities where the mayor, early on in the year, you know, provides that written direction to the treasurer, I want you to prepare a budget within these target parameters. Some of those targets include, I want you to talk to every member on council and get their input. I want you to do these kinds of community consultation and get their input. And I want you to present the budget on such and such a date with X percent tax increase and these five priorities. That is not terribly out of line with what we are already doing in a more informal way. I think that is the sort of direction staff would be proposing that we take with this change in process. Again, details to be hammered up, but very much what it looks like on the ground, I think, will be very much informed by the flavor of the local staff and council.
Mr. Grant, go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So for Counselor Penel, does this go past housing? It can. But it's, it's depending on various municipalities and how that works. I think the degree of flexibility built in to the strong mayor regulation allows people to tailor it where there could be more authority over human resources or not. There could be a degree of influence of the budget at a high or a detailed level, but that, it, it's all in the implementation about how that works. And, you know, various municipalities handle this differently. And so I would say that, is it specifically related to housing? The bylaw, the policy, sort of voting and vetoes, those sorts of things, the legislative arm of this kind of regulation is largely related to housing and infrastructure. There are additional elements that can be adopted or not that go above and beyond that. And I, I think that answers your question, Counselor.
Thank, thank you. It, it's clear as mud, because it's early days. But one thing that you did say that I fixated on was that you said that other municipalities have implemented. So there is other, other municipalities that are already running on this because we said, in here it says an additional. Have we reached out to any of them at all to see how, how they're running things and how they're, what bylaws they've put in place to make sure? I don't know where to go with this after this, because it's not very clear to me at all.
I think Madam Clerk has done an extensive amount of research on it, and I know that she's shared a lot of it with me, but go ahead, Jess.
So through your worship, one of the professional associations, the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario has, is acting as a resource for municipalities who are, have been granted strong mayor's powers. They last year did a survey of who has done what with these powers to find there's a mix of who decided to delegate which powers, how often the actual veto ability has been used varies tremendously. Many municipalities never used it at all. Many municipalities delegated things back to how they had been before in terms of their human resources stuff. Some chose not to. And the municipalities have been sharing their templates for, everyone created a website because there's a requirement that mayoral decisions using strong mayors must be made public. So everybody now has a page on their website of, here's our strong mayor's mayoral decisions. Some of those pages are empty, except for the one a year for the budget. Some of them have quite a lot of decisions on them. So it's, yeah, if that helps answer your question.
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll reach, I'll reach out to you at a later date, maybe so I can go and search some of these websites to see how it looks to me, and maybe that'll help too. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Okay, thank you, through your worship. First of all, I can't sit here and without saying that the council we have right now, the mayor we have, the staff we have right now is absolutely phenomenal. I've had the pleasure of sitting in the back row seats for a lot of years, and various years over, and didn't see a council that works as well as this council does. This council works together absolutely amazing. Whether we agree on an item, disagree on an item, whatever, we work amazing. What I think I'm hearing is with this, this strong mayor's powers, we have the ability to decide what we're going to implement with it and what we don't. Is that what I'm understanding here?
With respect to some things, yes. There, there's, there's some flexibility there with respect to delegation of, of, of powers. And then there's certain things that can't be delegated. However, I sense that there's some check stations in between there. For example, the budget, the budget is still going to be presented to council. But with the legislation, the way it is, or the way it's going to be, or the way it's, it's projected to be, basically, the mayor has the ability to work with, with staff to provide a budget to council. And then they, it's up to council to see that they want to make any changes or not. So that's my understanding of it, Jess. And I know you've done a lot more research than I have, but is there anything you'd like to add to that? Mr. Grant.
So it's also, what we will also send to council is, is I received, which informed the report you had in front of you today, sort of an overview from our integrity commissioner, which details, you know, what the powers are, what it looks like, that sort of thing. I was remiss in providing that earlier because I went on vacation and candidly, I apologize, didn't do it. So I will send that along, and any other resources, we can certainly pass along to you. But again, this is the beginning of a conversation where we've taken a lot of the information just to put this in front of council, you know, in advance of, of the regulations being tabled in the legislature. And should council have any further questions as we move forward, we will endeavor to, to answer those questions. But I would say, you know, having dealt with strong mayor powers being introduced before at a larger municipality and worked with other municipalities, there is a certain amount of learning as you go for municipalities with this particular legislation. It's, it's just the nature of it. And so there is a great deal of collaboration that goes on with different clerks and the like. This would be, I would suggest, the first time it's introduced at a level of municipalities where it's not full-time councils. That is new. And so what I expect is there will be a great deal of learning from, from staff and others to let everybody know what the, the legislation says, who's responsible for what, how people are doing different things. And I would commend the clerk in the work that she's done to date and, and figuring these things out, and making sure that both the mayor and members of council understand when it, when, and if and when this legislation is tabled, what it says and what our obligations are.
Okay, and I was just questioning that because I know, really, you might want to check with Arroyo and see what they're doing and handling it, because their mayor fired the CIO before he even started. So just trying to, I have no issues with the way things are now, but the next, the next term, or two terms, or three terms down, I just, I don't know. At least, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead, Jess.
So through your worship, just a final comment, and aside from the piece about hiring and firing, there are, I just want to assure council, there, there are still controls on this. It's not installing a dictator at the head of your council. The mayor can give direction to staff in writing, but that direction is still to do things like do research, draft a report that covers this topic, and, and get it on the council agenda. The mayor can't tell staff or direct staff to go against an established bylaw or policy that has been put in place by council. The mayor cannot, single-handedly pass a bylaw or policy, would still need to get consensus of council on side to do that. So the more established policies and bylaws and procedures you have in place, the more routine structures you have to prevent abuse of these types of powers. And, and even then, it's, any mayor, no matter who they may be in the future, the most damaging thing they could do would be around the employment pieces. The rest of it, they still require some degree of council support to do it. They, they can't actually affect any action on their own, single-handedly, because they need council to pass bylaws.
Thanks, Jess. Is there anything else? And maybe this is a, oh, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on that to Madam Clerk, as from what I heard was that the mayor would still need some, something from council. However, the vote changes from 50 plus one down to two, three, to two people, right?
Through your worship, if there is a legitimate connection to promoting housing or infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Is there anything else?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I, I think I just best keep my mouth shut on this, but like I said before, the, the whole thing just seems undemocratic. I, I don't quite understand, it says here that if the mayor vetoes, the council can reverse the veto by a two-thirds vote. So that's not really a veto then.
So through your worship, this is where we will write out our policies of what we would do in these cases. But from our initial read of the legislation, it appears that if the mayor believes that a bylaw interferes with housing priority, the mayor can veto the bylaw, has to explain the rationale of why they're vetoing it. Then the clerk notifies all of council that the bylaw has been vetoed. Then council has a certain number of days to convene a special meeting to override the veto decision, if council would like to do that. If council would like to do that, um, so, so there are some checks and balances on it. I just didn't get to that level of detail in the report.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Bill. Is there, is there anything else? Uh, go ahead.
Can I just say, Chair, uh, Mr. Mayor, I've, I, I've never had an issue with you on or off the, I saw, I'm not, this isn't like Mike said, it's not personal to you. It's just different for me to read something like this and, uh, understand the rule of law. And I, I, I looked at draft legislation. It looks a little bit different than this. Did, can I ask Jessica, did, did you write this from draft legislation or was that directly come to you just exactly like that?
So through your worship, I wrote this from the provincial announcement on one screen and the section of the municipal act on another screen and the section of the regulations on another screen and doing a lot of cross-referencing and best as I understood what it was saying. So I have yet on all of that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Uh, thanks, Bill. Uh, is there anything else? I'll weigh in, uh, very briefly. I, I think we've had a very good discussion about this. Just as a prime example of, of why we're here tonight is I'd asked the clerk and the CAO to put this report on so that everybody was on the same page, understanding the same thing, uh, moving forward. So, uh, is that an example of, of maybe how things are going to work or how things are actually currently working? I think it's probably a pretty, a better example. When I, when I first read through this, this legislation, I actually thought it was designed after our council because a lot of the things that were in the legislation are actually happening with respect to the conversations between myself and staff, with the conversations between myself and council. And, and it became apparent to me at that point that we're probably doing things right. And there's not an op, there really isn't going to be a whole lot of opportunity for, for the use of this piece of legislation. Quite obviously, there will be some municipalities in this province that aren't going to be as fortunate as we are. And I think we're starting to see that already. And, uh, um, you know, I wish them well. But, um, there will probably be some municipalities that aren't going to fare as well as we are after, uh, after, uh, the first of May. I can assure you that despite this new legislation, which, uh, none of us asked for, is not going to adjust the way we're going to do business. We have a very extremely functioning council. We have an extremely functioning staff. And at this point, I'm amazed at the amount of growth that we've been able to do in a very short period of time. And I don't think there's anyone in this room or anyone in the corporation of the Town of Greater Napanee want to jeopardize that. Quite obviously, moving forward, I'm going to be working very closely with Madam Clerk and Mr. Grant with respect to putting into place check stations, so, so to speak, with respect to this legislation to ensure that this municipality, at least until November of 2026, is running smoothly and hopefully beyond. I thank council for the candid conversations that we've had this evening because this isn't a very easy topic to talk about, especially when you have a group of people sitting around a horseshoe that get along as well as we do. And I can't remember who's mentioned it, but yes, we do disagree with things. We, uh, sometimes we get mad at each other. But by the end of the night, you know what? We're all able to go for something to eat and, and life is grand. So, um, it's going to be some interesting times. It, it's, uh, it, it, there's going to be some work from Madam Clerk because we now have to adjust procedures, adjust policies, adjust bylaws, uh, add documents onto, uh, onto agendas that have to be signed within two or three days of my, my memory serving right, Jess. So bear with us. We'll wait and see what comes out, uh, in the next week or so and, uh, we'll move forward from that. So is there anything else that anyone would like to comment on? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the executive services' strong mayor's power report. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cowherd, seconded by Councillor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? And it looks like it's three, three. So it's just a matter of receiving and I will support the motion. So the motion has passed. Moving on, council inquiry, follow-up enforcement update. And I see Mr. Grant is coming to the front. So whenever you get settled in, Mr. Grant, the floor will be yours.
So, uh, thank you, uh, through your worship. Um, at the last, uh, regular council, um, there was a council inquiry with respect to what is the town doing to address illegal encampments on private property? So I will say that, uh, we are currently engaged in this kind of action. So I will be high level in terms of the details as, um, some of these would be, um, related to ongoing legal matters. So I will speak to, um, in the occasion where those things happen and are happening. So, you know, we would have, uh, the ability to manage encampments on public property. The, when there might be encampments, um, on private property, that would be a different matter where it would be an issue of zoning, fire code, environmental, uh, or bylaw non-compliance. So, um, we would use those levers, uh, to address issues uh, of encampments on private property. And often those would involve, uh, court action as opposed to by law enforcement. Um, I can confirm, um, that, you know, in the issue of, uh, encampments, uh, on private property, uh, those would be and are the steps that we are taking. The, uh, i- in terms of, um, something that came up specifically with, um, types of encampments on private property, uh, we did bump into, uh, an issue where, if, uh, uh, a property owner is renting out, um, accommodations which, uh, might be deemed, um, unsafe, uh, by the fire chief or illegal in terms of where they're placed, um, those are, uh, being on occasions funded through social services, um, because the legislation does not, as we understand it and the information we've been provided, uh, provide the ability not to fund those provided they are given, uh, an address and a receipt for rental payments. I raised this because it is beyond the capacity of, uh, my understanding, either the county uh, or staff at the town level to address this issue because it's a legislative issue. And should there be a desire to have the town be able to engage differently with this? It would require a legislative change and for that we would, uh, it would be a government-to-government discussion. But at a high level, that's how we, uh, would and are addressing the issues of encampments on private property. It would be through zoning, uh, fire and by law enforcement, um, often or perhaps through the court and not necessarily through a regular bylaw enforcement as the encampment protocol uh, identifies, which is done on public property. And I'm happy to have the clerk add anything else if there's anything I've missed.
Through your worship, no additional, um, comments to add. Just here if there's any questions about specifics, uh, related to enforcement.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Is there any questions or comments with respect to the report or the presentation before us? Yeah, Councillor Schenk.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you need a, a motion to, uh, facilitate the discussion between, uh, Queen's Park and the municipality to stop the circle?
You, you are reading my mind, uh, Mike. I struggle and I've struggled with this for a long period of time and I have made my views very well known. How a government can fund an encampment or maybe more properly put, a compound while another level of government is telling them that it's not only illegal but unsafe. With respect to my inquiries, with respect to that, uh, I was advised that, uh, it's the legislation that's wrong. It's through protection by the, with the reg, regulation, legislation under the act. But it flies in the face of common sense is that when, when, when our government is, is, is handing out money, which funds it, but also is handing out money to shut it down. It just doesn't make sense. So yes, Councillor Schenk, I would be looking for a motion, um, to receive the information, uh, the inquiry, follow-up enforcement update report and further that council direct the mayor and the CAO to make inquiries with the province of Ontario regarding the legislative requirement to use social services funding to support rent payments to housing deemed non-compliant with the building code, fire code and municipal bylaws. And further, that council direct mayor and CAO to invite the County of Lennox and Annington to join us, to join the town in this effort. Moved by Councillor Schenk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor or the report that's in front of us? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, the motion's carried. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next up, executive services proposed temporary road closure by law. And Jess, are you going to speak to that?
So through your worship, this report is here based on the discussion at the last meeting. Uh, this solidifies in bylaw basically what our current practices are. Community groups should not have a substantially different experience with the town as a result of this proposed bylaw. Available for any questions.
Uh, is there any questions for Jess with respect to a report or presentation? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, executive services proposed temporary road closure by law report. And further, that council consider the adoption of the bylaw to delegate the powers of council to temporarily close municipal roads later at this meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cowherd, seconded by Councillor Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Growth and infrastructure, 84-inch smooth drum roller purchase report. And Mr. Nobes, you're going to speak to that.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I'll be brief. Um, the reason this got added, uh, late, uh, after original agenda publication is because we received pricing back through the canoe procurement, um, process, uh, over the weekend. Uh, so we, we had a couple of quotes come in late last week and then a couple came in over the weekend. Ultimately, we received a total of, uh, four, uh, four submissions from vendors. There is a, a clear low, low bidder at, uh, total taxes included, $210,792, for an 84-inch, uh, case, uh, smooth drum roller. We are recommending, uh, approval of the purchase of this item with an additional $5,000 for outfitting with AVL and, and two-way radio and, and remaining 360 lights. This was a budgeted item and is entirely to be, uh, be funded from the Public Works, uh, Fleet Development Charge Reserve. So this has no, uh, no tax levy impact. I have available for any questions, but, uh, we, we got four bids and we're recommending the low bid. It's sitting on a lot right now and, and, uh, ultimately would not be subject to tack, uh, to tariffs, uh, where the other three submissions, uh, may have tariff implications as well. So it's, it's ready, ready and, and able to be picked up, uh, if council, uh, chooses to approve the purchase tonight.
Thanks, uh, Michael. Uh, Councillor Schenk, then I'll go to Councillor Hicks.
Oh, no, I just did the payback. I'll just say this quick because we're running out of time. Uh, five years payback, $40,000 a year for rental. So it makes common sense. It's already been budgeted. So I will stack recommendation.
We have a mover and a seconder. Is there any other conversations with respect to the, uh, report or the presentation for us? Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Yep, go ahead, uh, Councillor Penel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nobes, it is, this come with full warranty. Obviously it's new, it's, but it's just a 2023.
Yeah, through your worship, uh, so that we, we did clarify that it is a brand new zero hours on the machine and the warranty starts from date of purchase ultimately.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Penel. Uh, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Thank you through your worship. Michael, um, do we currently own one or we, we've been renting one, renting one all the way along, correct?
Through your worship, yes, that's correct. We've been renting one, uh, for around $5,000 a month for eight months of the year.
Okay. So what would the, the replacement timeframe for this item be? Would it be, would it be 10 years because it's already two years old? Would it be 12 years, 15 years, 20 years? Because we only use it, you know, half the year type thing. Just wondering what the, the replacement, uh, timeframe would be on this machine.
Through, through your worship, um, I would have to anticipate that this would be in the 20-year timeframe. Um, given that it's, uh, used approximately three quarters of the year, um, are, are, um, is that from the, um, asset management plan?
Through your worship, that's for our asset useful life. So for TCA purposes, it would be a 20-year useful life on, on this piece of equipment.
Yeah, i- in comparison to a, a, a dump truck, for example, that would have a, a lower, uh, lower timeframe useful life. This was, uh, has a 20-year.
Excellent. Thank you. No, it's a great, it's a great idea. It's going to be definitely a money saver. Thank you.
Thank, thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is there anything else before we call for the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, the motion's carried. Uh, now we're going to circle back with respect to the correspondence, Madam Clerk, I think, is number 17 that, uh, Councillor Penel wanted to, uh, uh, pull and have a conversation about. And, uh, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we've all had a, a good conversation regarding the special powers. And, um, I think that, that what I'm going to propose is it doesn't hurt for us to, uh, to support Rito Lakes in their motion that they've made along with, uh, others that we found in our, in our, um, um, sorry, I just was just reading some, in, in our, uh, package. So what, what I'm going to do, and again, save time, I'm just going to make this motion and see who we get a vote for. But, uh, make a motion that the Town of Greater Napanee sends a letter of support to the township of Rito Lakes in regard to the, the opposition of Ontario expanding strong mayor powers to additional 169 municipalities, which includes Greater Napanee. And a copy, uh, of the letter of support can also be sent to the Honorable Premier Doug Ford, Honorable, uh, MPP Rick Brise, Honorable Rob Flack, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, which is AMO, the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, AMCTO, and all remaining municipalities in Ontario for their considerations of the support.
Thank you, uh, Councillor Penel. Uh, moved by Councillor Penel, seconded by Deputy, uh, Councillor Norrie. Conversations. Is there any conversation we want to have with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Yeah, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, through your worship, just so that it's clear on what council might be voting on, is the Town of Greater Napanee supporting the township of Rito Lakes in their request that they not be included in strong mayors and that the legislation be reconsidered? Or is the Town of Greater Napanee also asking to not be included?
Sorry, it's my fault. And it's so that town of Greater Napanee not be included.
Thank you, uh, for the clarification. Uh, do you want to record a vote?
Yeah, I'd like to see recorded vote on this one.
Okay. And Deputy Mayor Calver has asked for a recorded vote. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there any other conversations before we have the recorded vote? Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
Now, uh, but I would like to see what you're going to tweak, how are you going to tweak this bylaw? You know what I mean? I, it means, but that isn't, that is, we won't find that out till whenever, okay? So a yes vote is that I agree with the motion that's on the floor, correct? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Schenk. Uh, sorry, Madam Clerk, this is your job, not mine.
Sorry, through your worship, okay, recorded vote. Uh, the motion on the floor is that the town of Greater Napanee sends a letter of support to the township of Rita Lakes in regard to the opposition of Ontario expanding strong mayor powers. Um, and specifically that the town of Greater Napanee is opposed to strong mayor powers being extended to Greater Napanee. Letter copied to various other agencies and members of provincial government. Uh, Ward one, Counselor Schenk.
Yes.
Ward two, Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Ward three, Counselor Pennell.
Yes.
Ward four, Counselor Norrie.
Yes.
Ward five, Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
I'm going to vote no, from the way I'm understanding, I'm voting a no.
Mayor Richardson.
No.
That motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on to bylaws, bylaw number 2025 0031 to amend zoning bylaw 0222. And this has to do with the West Bridges State subdivision. Uh, I'll look for a motion, put it on the floor. Moved by Counselor Schenk, seconded by Counselor Norrie, ready, first, second, and finally passed. This 22nd day of April, 2025, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Next matter, delegate, to delegate the powers of council to temporarily close a municipal road, look for motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Ready, first, second, and finally passed this 22nd day of April, 2025, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Bylaw number 2025 0033 to amend bylaw number 2023 0067 to adopt a reserves and reserves fund policy. Look for motion put on the floor, moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin, ready, first, second, and finally passed this 22nd day of April, 2025, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Bylaw number 2025 0034 to adopt the tax rates for 2025. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Calver. Moved, uh, ready, first, second, and finally passed this 22nd day of April, 2025, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Bylaw number 2025 0035 to amend the fees and charges, bylaw number 2023 0027. Motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk, ready, first, second, and finally passed this 22nd day of April, 2025, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Information reports from members, is there any, uh, members that want to provide verbal or written information updates to the external boards and committees they may be appointed to? Seeing none, inquiries, do any members of council have any inquiries, uh, they'd like to make to staff? Go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
I'll be quick, Mike. With the potential of another mail disruption, can I just, at some point in the next couple of months, get a report back? Cause the only two bills I get in the mail are utilities and taxes from town. Everybody else sends an email. So with a chance, could they look at a chance of the citizens to opt that way? Please? But again, no rush because I know staff's busy, but sometime in the next couple of months.
Mr. Grant?
Uh, so just to clarify, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think what I'm hearing from you, uh, counselor is, uh, can we bring back a report that, uh, would indicate, um, people being able to get notifications via, uh, new digital technology and not necessarily just the mail?
Yeah, I think I said that, but yeah.
Understood.
Try to save the town some money.
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. Getting with the year 2025, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Norrie. Is there any other inquiries? Seeing none, uh, notices of motion. Does anybody have any notices of motion? Seeing none, uh, new business. Anyone have any new business? Seeing none, announcements? Is there any announcements anyone would like to make? Seeing none, CAO's remarks. Mr. Grant, do you have any remarks you would like to, uh, say?
Not today, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Uh, forward calendar, we all had an opportunity to take a look at the forward calendar with respect to the, uh, forward calendar and the coun, the council resolution tracker. Is there anything in those two documents anyone would like to ask any questions of or make any comments to? Seeing none, look for motion to confirm the proceedings, uh, bylaw to confirm proceedings at council corporation of town of Greater Napanee. Uh, motion moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin, ready, first, second, and finally passed this 22nd day of April, 2025, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion's carried, motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Schenk, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks, folks. Uh, 9:58, we made it. We'll, uh, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.